The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
As for the agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
All right.
The agenda, and we will reconvene after the interviews. Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order here in the Novak Room. The Select Board for the last half hour was downstairs conducting multiple board interviews for various committees, and we will take up those appointments at our next meeting on November 1st. Again, good evening to everybody, good evening and welcome, and good evening to those watching at home. I'd like to introduce the Select Board. To my right, we have Select Woman Levy Rontrioloff, good evening.
Good evening.
And we have our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
And our Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
And Selectman Daryl Brown, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Nico Papakosandis, and also with us, we have our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening, Mr. Dean.
Good evening.
And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, hi Joanna. Okay, we'll jump right in, we have a lot on the agenda this evening. First, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come up and offer comment to the Board. We do ask that if your comments are relative to anything on the agenda, that you wait till that agenda comes up. I'll pause for a moment. And seeing no public.
I have a quick question, comment. I was wondering if we could have a conversation, I've gotten a lot of messages about trash issues at Brookside Drive, and I don't know if DPW could address some of the issues that people have been posing about. That particular area where the condos are and the apartments are, aren't covered by our trash department, but the street where the trash gets dumped is, and so I just want to figure out, is that something that we need to look at? Or is that something that the condo association has to figure out? But it's a frequent issue, and I just think that, you know, before it continues and just gets worse, that we at least have a discussion about it.
No, great, thank you for passing that on. Mr. Dean, I think you've been in some conversation, or where would that?
Yeah, so I actually was just contacted today by Great North Management about some of the issues over there, and it is true that they don't qualify for trash pickup or bulky item pickup, and there is some conversation going on about how, we're not sure why the furniture is showing up where it is, when it is, and I know that they had a couple of ideas that they were going to implement, including no dumping and putting up signs. But internally, at the Department of Public Works, we're very conscious of the places that don't have blue bag access and don't have bulky pickup. So when we sell stickers, we're very in tune to that, and we try not to, we want to make sure we don't sell stickers to those places, because obviously if the trash isn't picked up, it's not going to be picked up even if it has a sticker on it. So that's how we're looking at it internally, and we're trying to lend our support to their process, but we don't know where the dumping is coming from, they don't seem to know where it's coming from. So I know that they did want to come in and talk to the Board about it at a subsequent meeting, so that could happen.
Okay, thank you.
Select Woman Rontrioloff, could you pass on, maybe if you have correspondence, maybe pass it on to Mr. Dean, and then that way we can, when we put it on the agenda, we could reach out to those folks?
Yeah, absolutely, and I just think that it's helpful to know that, that for the folks who live there, that when they come here to purchase stickers, that maybe, I don't know what the process is, but just that people are informed, so that it doesn't become this, oh, the town's not doing anything about it, and it's like, well, actually.
Right, and we would not sell stickers to those who weren't part of our blue bag program.
Thank you, thank you, Select Woman Rontrioloff. Okay, moving on, we don't have any proclamations or recognitions this evening, so at this time, I would ask the Board to look at the regular meeting extra Select Board minutes of October 4th, 2021, and if there are any revisions or amendments, please let us know, or if there are no revisions or amendments, I would entertain a motion to approve the extra Select Board regular meeting minutes of October 4th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes 4-0-1 abstention, thank you. And we do not have any appointments, however, I regret that we do have a resignation from the Budget Recommendations Committee effective October 12th, 2021, from Amy Farnham. So with regret, I would ask for a motion to accept Amy Farnham's resignation from the Budget Recommendation Committee effective October 12th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Before we get into our discussion items, if the Board will indulge, we had a request from Assistant Fire Chief Justin Pizon, that we allow him to speak briefly on the donation that's in our packet, so if there's no objection from the Board. We have Assistant Fire Chief Justin Pizon, and I think you have Marissa Spiny with you?
Yes, I do.
Great.
Do you want to need a microphone and speaking?
Oh.
Oh, that would help.
I can just shout, at least I'm not the only one off today. I know, you've got your two microphones.
I've got two microphones.
Little stereo from her.
Having to nod, I think the code got changed. You need a microphone out here? On the way.
Well, it would have been interesting to see how far into the meeting we would have gone before we noticed.
I agree with Tom. At least 100%.
Check, check.
All right. Much appreciated, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, Justin Pizon, Assistant Fire Chief alongside Marissa Spiny, she's a firefighter paramedic with us, and she's also the one responsible for overseeing the operations of our Exeter Firefighters Toy Bank. So in September, Portsmouth Hospital hosted an event for an EMA's appreciation regarding the last year of everything everybody's gone through, which was an event that I took part in on a Saturday, and at the event, they had the opportunity to enter for a $500 cash award and a raffle. So I put our name in for the raffle, and we were one of the 10 people that were selected for a $500 donation, and that was at, very graciously donated by Pritchard Electric Vehicles, who's an electric vehicle manufacturer, no strings attached. So instead of the actual dollars coming to the town, I thought would be a great opportunity where we were in September, rolling up on Christmas, that that $500 donation be made to the Exeter Firefighters Toy Bank. So I waited for the check to be received, which they did send, and I have it in my possession, and I'm here tonight to just ask the Board to accept that donation. I understand, I'm still learning the processes of town government, that I probably didn't need to be here because it wasn't made to the town, but I was acting and functioning as an agent of the town of Exeter, so I felt it appropriate to still show up tonight and make sure it was on the up and up, and that's why we're here.
Great, well, first of all, thank you for doing that. Mr. Dean, do we need a formal motion, or?
I don't, I actually don't think you do, because this is something that's not in the town's coffers, but if you'd like to make a motion, it is a symbolic thank you, I think that that would be within the Board's purview.
Okay, I think that would be appropriate. Any objections from the Board?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to accept the $500 donation.
So moved. From Pritchard.
Pritchard Electric Vehicles.
Pritchard Electric Vehicles. Okay. So moved.
Second, sorry.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Monday.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. First up on our discussion items this evening, we have Greg Beeson, the Director of Parks and Rec, as well as David Tovey, who's the Assistant Director of Parks and Rec, to talk about a community survey. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Greg Beeson, Exeter Parks and Rec Director. I'm going to turn this over to David, David has been working with Scott at Rockingham Planning Commission, so.
Good, okay, thank you. Hi, Dave.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. David Tovey, Assistant Director, Exeter Parks and Recreation. So recently, the department was approached by Scott from Rockingham Planning Commission to see if the department and the town would participate in an upcoming senior survey, or let me get the proper name for it, planning for age-friendly communities in Rockingham County. So they are partnering, well, first, they got a grant from Tufts Health Plan Foundation, and they will be partnering with Rockingham Nutrition Meals on Wheels, and also AARP for this project. Hopefully, all of you got the memo in your packet to read on this. But what they're looking for is about six to eight communities to participate in their first year. Each community would form a local steering committee that would then report to regional steering committee. After the formation of this local steering committee, which would be composed of local town staff and also local residents, we would then conduct a community-wide survey of older adults to gather input on aspects on their community, and what it is that they value, why they would want to stay in age-in-place, concerns they may have about aging in their community, and thoughts on met needs, on how to address them. After compiling all the data, we would have a community forum to share the results, and also gather further input, and then finally, a formal final assessment report to give off to the regional steering committee. Select Woman Gilman was present at our Recreation Advisory Board meeting, where we presented all of this, and the REC Advisory Board did formally endorse us to move forward. So we're here today, the Rockingham Planning Commission would like the town to formally endorse this at the governing body level, so we're here today to request the Select Board to formally endorse the department to represent the town and participate in this aging survey.
Great, thank you. Select Woman Gilman, do you have any further comments, since you were at the REC Advisory Meeting?
Oh, I think it's a great idea, we've gone, because of COVID, actually, I think we've gone a little off course from giving our seniors some better representation in the activities that we have to do, and with the potential expansion that we're going to get, we would get, we hope to get, from 10 Hampton Road, and now that the doors are more open and vaccinations have occurred, we can go back to the programs that we had. Having this kind of survey, that it looks like it's going to catch more than just the congregate living facilities that we have, and I think that's important, because those are the folks that we're not hearing from, because they don't have an opportunity. So working on it in this kind of collaborative way is going to help us go further than the known aspects of the aging demographic.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Board? For Dave?
I have a quick one. In a different lifetime, I worked for AARP and saw a lot of this work sort of in practice in different communities, and I do think that the aging in place component is really important, not just in terms of activities, but also in care, in caregiving, in taxes that we pay, and ways to prioritize projects, and just leads to a whole host of proper planning that can happen, especially with a town and state that is aging sort of rapidly. So really excited for this collaboration, I think that there is going to be a ton of really useful information that comes out of it, and as somebody who's sort of climbing into that bracket pretty rapidly.
Don't say that.
I think it's a really good, I think it's a really good thing, thank you.
Great, thank you. And I'm excited too, you know, I'm passionate about our seniors, and that's always been, you know, one of my platforms, I think anything we can do to help improve the programming for these folks is vital. Pedro, I appreciate you bringing this before the Board. If there are no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to endorse the Parks and Rec Department to participate in the Rockingham Planning Commission Age-Friendly Community Survey. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, next, next on our agenda, it's a parking lease agreement for 10 Hampton Road, we have Parks and Rec Director Greg Beeson before us.
Yes, as you see in your packet, there's a slight modification, and Russ and I can go into that. The current owner of 10 Hampton Road approached us after the article came out of the potential purchase of said property. People thought that we had already purchased said property, and there'd be 30 to 40, up to 50 cars already parking in there every evening and on the weekends. So to protect both the town and the current owner, Mr. Phil Dean asked to enter into a lease agreement for a $1 a month, just so we can add a certificate of liability, naming him co-insured. So it's just protecting both of us, so we can, we've temporarily closed the gate and put signs up, no parking, but he is amenable to having people use and access the facility via his parking lot in said hours. There's specific hours written into the lease where it's staff-only from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. He had already been allowing our park staff access for programming and maintenance, but participant.
There's already signage right now, Mr. Chair, of no parking, but we would be modifying this of specifically no parking, or parking only allowed during certain hours. That is listed in the lease.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to confirm with Greg. It says $100 a month in the lease, so I just wanted to make sure that it is $100 a month.
Sorry, it is $100 a month.
$100 a month.
Not a dollar?
Not a dollar.
Yep.
I have a question. Will the area be roped off in some fashion so that people don't make their own parking arrangements?
Yes. Yeah, we have cones, and we have great stakes that we're going to put up to make sure people aren't parking every which way. So it's going to be designated parking in the back only.
Good. Thank you.
And Mr. Dean, just technically, whether it's a dollar or a hundred, where would those funds come from?
They come out of the revolving fund as a program expense.
Recreation.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Beeson?
Just wanted to also let the board know that this has been reviewed by Primex and Legal as well, so.
Great. Thank you.
It's in order.
Well, Mr. Beeson, I applaud your risk management mitigation initiative here. It's a good move. So if there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the parking lease agreement at 10 Hampton Road for $100 a month and authorize the town manager to sign the lease agreement. So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you.
So moving along, next discussion item is the Riverwoods Tax Agreement, and I believe we have some guests to speak to that. We have, do we have, from Zoom, are they Zooming, or are they?
I think they're here.
They're here.
They're all here, in person.
So we have, we have Justine Vogel, the CEO of Riverwoods. Good evening. And Deborah Riddell, the Executive Director. And Attorney Summers, I believe, is here to speak to this. So I'll let Attorney Summers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First of all, it's nice to be back in this room. This is the first time that I've been here. This is so exciting. Never thought I'd say that. There we are. So I, last time when we were here, last year, or actually, we weren't here, this was a Zoom meeting, you asked that we come in and give you a little bit, kind of a refresher as to what the status of the underlying statute was. And so that's what we're going to attempt to do tonight. I'll try to keep that piece very brief, and then Justine and Deb can provide you with a lot more operational detail in terms of precisely how we go about performing the charitable tasks which the statute addresses. So the first thing that I want to say is that, and I put a lot of this in the letter already, is that the, back in 1992, which was prior to the creation of Riverwoods, the New Hampshire Legislature decided to create a statutory scheme in which there was a partial exemption for various kinds of real estate taxes that met certain qualifications in terms of what was defined as charitable. So one of those types of uses, and the statute categorizes them by use, was housing to the, housing provided to the elderly if the owner of that particular elderly housing can show that they're charitable. And the next step in that analysis, this is kind of a sequential thing, is that you then have to look at the definition of what constitutes charitable under the statute. And that's pretty broad. The, you know, sort of the first obvious test is to see if the organization which operates the elderly housing is a 501(c)(3), is a nonprofit charitable organization, which of course we are. And then the statute also goes on to indicate, or to ask whether or not it's organized and administers for a charitable purpose to meet the housing, health care, and financial security needs of aged individuals. Obviously, we do that. The revenue, and Justine and Deb can get into this more particularly, but the revenue from the independent living units, which is the actual accommodations there, subsidizes the cost of assisted living, memory support, skilled nursing, which we call, by the way, healthcare, that's the term that we use in the agreement. And we also have those fees subsidize the less expensive independent living units. So there's an entire spectrum of cost sharing, if you will, that's baked into the, to the financial operations here. So again, they can speak to that, but I just want to convey the fact that the structure of this, both in terms of the corporate structure and our organizational requirements, and also the manner in which we finance this whole thing, does have a charitable nature. And I think that the next step that I would say is that the statutory definition is very broad, and it's, there's not an awful lot of case law that goes to support that, or really even to define what that is. But what it does say is that to be charitable, you have to offer service to a substantial and indefinite segment of the general public, which includes residents of New Hampshire. And obviously, we do that. And that service has to, as the statute says, advance the spiritual, physical, intellectual, social, or economic well-being. That can mean just about anything, I suppose, but certainly, in the case of Riverwoods, I think that we meet all of those qualifications, because we provide physical care, social care, because we foster a sense of community over there. We provide economic well-being and all manner of things. So I think the bottom line is that we meet these qualifications, and we have been in a long-term arrangement with the town of Exeter, in which we have been, established a methodology a long time ago, I think back in 1994 was when this thing first started, to identify how, the terms of the agreement are going to be structured, and we believe it works, and we believe that the arrangement should continue. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to these folks who have far more interesting things to tell you about the operation of Riverwoods.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Justine Vogel. I'm the CEO of Riverwoods. I am perfectly happy to talk about whatever you all are interested in, so I'm not sure if answering questions is a better concept, or I can talk about Riverwoods for hours on end, which I'm assuming you don't want. I would just emphasize one point that Sharon spoke of, and that is, every two years, we have an actuarial study that looks at our financial performance. We have a commitment to our residents, and it looks at, of our 392 independent apartments, which of those units are considered, what we consider mission apartments. So they are subsidized by the other apartments, independent apartments. And that turns out to be, on a pretty consistent basis, the smallest 83 units. Additionally, that also shows us that 100% of the independent apartments help to subsidize the health center. So everyone who's in the health center is receiving subsidization. Nursing care on the market today is about $12,000 a month, and our folks might pay, on an average, about $5,500. So that's, that is how we think about charity, but I'm happy to answer your questions instead of just rambling on about our organization.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from Ms. Vogel?
I'd just like to say, I know an awful lot about how you run, so I don't know what question to ask you to educate the public. I think that you're, you know, pretty open to getting calls from people asking how the operation works, but I think your explanation of how the independent living really subsidizes the rest of the.
Health center.
Community, or health center, yeah, and the community itself is very well done.
Thank you.
Selectman Brown.
If so, and the statistics of the 83 of 392 are subsidized by the others.
Correct.
Is the entry, so is there a base to enter, or is this 83, they've run out of funds, or they've come in at a lower?
So there's, yeah, it's a great question. So actuarially, the 83 smallest apartments, those folks still pay an entrance fee and a monthly service fee. When we look at, when the actuaries look at this, they'll look at the projected cost for that person over their lifetime, and the projected revenue, what they would pay. And those are units where the person would never pay as much as they're expected to receive. But in addition to that, we have, at any point in time, five to seven people who have run out of funds, and they are receiving their services at Riverwoods for free. And then, in addition to that, the other layer is, there are 150 plus or minus healthcare units, and all of those are being subsidized to some degree, based on what apartment they moved from, by the folks who are living currently in independent living.
Okay.
Thanks. And just a couple more follow-ups on that. So there's federal subsidies for aspects of your expenses as well?
We don't receive, we don't participate in the Medicaid program. We do receive Medicare. So on any given, at any given point in time, we might have three or four people who are receiving a Medicare stay.
Great.
It's pretty limited to qualify for Medicare A.
Okay. And then, can you speak to what the entry is, what the entry fee?
The entry fees range from a studio apartment to the largest cottage. So a studio apartment, I'm going to look to Deb care, because I forget. So just under $300,000, which would be 90% refundable to the estate when the person passes away or moves out. To our largest cottage, entrance fee there might be about $800,000.
Okay. Thanks. I just, that's where I would look to counter the indefinite segment, and say it's a very, I would just counter with, it could be seen as a definite segment of the population. So it's definite in that it's people who can contribute at least 300K.
So that's for an entrance fee that is 90% refundable to an estate. We also have entrance fees that are 50% refundable or declining balance. And I should know that off the top of my head. I don't know, the entrance fees for the smallest unit for non-refundable, it would be under $200,000.
Okay. And that includes food and everything?
Yeah. So folks pay a monthly service fee also, but that is utilities, it is socialization, as Sharon said, it is the equivalent of one meal a day, it is all kinds of educational opportunities, it is utilities, it is property taxes, it is, and it is the right to receive health care services at no cost to the public. So their, a person's monthly service fee, should they move to the health center, is the same as it was when they were living independently. And so they're basically pre-insuring for that cost. We tend to think we keep people out of Medicaid, because if you had an asset balance of $300,000 and you needed health care services, nursing home services for more than two years, you'd be out of funds and on the Medicaid program.
Yeah. Thanks. And last, last question is where, the utility fee, that's not a fixed cost, it would rise with ever, is it directly attached to electricity rises, your monthly fee rises?
There's one monthly service fee, and that is adjustable each year. About half of our costs are service-related, so we're, you know, we're a service industry, so about half our costs are payroll and taxes. But that's one fee, and it covers all of those things. It doesn't, it's not based on the apartment you live in, or, the monthly service fee is based on the size of your apartment, but it's not broken out by utilities, or food, or health care services, or educational opportunities. It's just one fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Selectman Brown. Any questions, Selectman Brown, Selectwoman Cowan?
No, I think, I think you covered a lot of my questions. Yeah, I don't know that I have any questions.
Mr. Dean, anything to add?
Nothing from me. Nope.
Okay. Well, then, if there are no other questions or comments, I guess I would look for a motion to approve the Riverwoods tax agreements for 2021.
Wait, before the motion's made, I do have a question. I really appreciate Attorney Summers that we're doing this all in one agreement instead of three separate ones, as we have done in previous years, so we only have to do one vote. So say that again.
That's, thank you for your question. I would seek a motion to approve the Riverwoods tax agreements, plural, for 2021.
Do we?
Yeah, I would amend it to add the campus names.
I was just going to say, should we discuss this further, or do you want to?
Well, that's why I asked if there were any.
I'd feel comfortable.
There any more discussion? I'm happy to have more discussion.
Under my toes?
Yeah, I would just feel comfortable, more comfortable waiting another meeting to just have discussion. If anyone has anything to say today, it's fine. If not, I'd like time to go over this.
Wishes of the board?
Well, I've done these many times, so I'm fine doing it today. If the others feel they need time.
I'm fine waiting until the next meeting.
Okay. And again, yeah, I, we've seen this before, but certainly, Selectman Brown, if you'd like to wait until the next meeting to make the motion, that's certainly fine.
Mr. Chairman, if there's additional information that we can provide to assist with the evaluation, you know, we'd be happy to do so. I'm sure that.
No, I appreciate that, thank you. That's why I asked, because I mean, personally, I'm, I'm fine, but, but again, if, if other members of the board need more time, or if you have additional questions, I mean, certainly while they're here.
Yeah. It's more a deliberative thing of, I asked the questions that I wanted information on, I've gotten that. I don't think it's appropriate to just, they're not binary questions of true, false, yes, no. It's a situation of, here's, this is a very reasonable agreement proposed here, but it's a proposed agreement, and so to just give an immediate yes on it feels, just feels like a.
And I respect your wishes on that. But Attorney Summers, is there, or Mr. Dean, is there a time deadline, or can we wait till November 1st, during this meeting?
We typically have these in place by the time we set our tax rate, because they do govern how Riverwoods is taxed from the town's perspective. So we wouldn't, we would not want to wait. We might be able to wait until the 1st, if there's a meeting on the 1st, but it is tax rate setting time, as we'll find out later in the agenda, so I have to, I have to throw it back to you, Mr. Chairman, but it's, it's a pretty tight window at this point.
Okay. But I, and I, but I respect, you know, Selectman Brown wanting some more time, but that's why I asked you, if we wait till November 1st, is that going to delay setting the tax rate in your timeline already, or?
It should not.
Okay. And Selectman Brown, you, you feel confident you'd be ready to vote on this November 1st?
Yes.
Okay. Any objections from the rest of the board?
That's fine.
Okay. I think out of, out of respect for Attorney Summers, and Ms. Vogel and Ms. Riddell, if you have any questions, maybe we could submit them, to them in writing, so they don't have to come back?
Sure.
To the meeting, is that fair? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Deb.
Okay, next. On our discussion items, we have a cable TV contract update from Attorney Kate Miller. Good evening, Attorney Miller.
Good evening. It's so nice to see everybody in person. It is a treat. So as we were chatting a little bit before the meeting started, we've been working on this Comcast cable TV franchise renewal for about five years now, and it's getting to the point where I think we can wrap it up, which is very nice. And I have one other item that I wanted to bring up that wasn't part of the memo, because I just learned about it, which is positive. So just to give a little background for people maybe listening, and for folks who haven't been around on this particular process previously, the town has a cable TV franchise with Comcast. It's not an exclusive franchise, we're not allowed to have exclusive franchises, but any cable company that wants any cable company that wants to operate in the town needs to have a franchise agreement to be in the public rights of way in order to reach all the customers. So the first agreement came in the, I think, early nineteen nineties. That was renewed, and that renewal agreement expired in 2017. We've been in sort of extension mode ever since then. We were dealing with some wrap-up details from the last renewal having to do with some work that Comcast was supposed to do at the SST, and that took a while to sort out, but that's been completed. Then in 2019, we had a change from the Federal Communications Commission on the way, some services that are provided gratis by the cable TV company to the town are now going to be considered as part of the franchise fee that's paid to the town. So these in-kind services of free cable TV at municipal and school locations are now going to count towards the five percent cap on franchise fees. Took a while for that to sort of settle out, and there were some cases challenging that, which has now settled down. And those are going to count towards the franchise fee cap, but at the marginal cost to Comcast to provide those services. So we don't know, yet know exactly what those costs are going to be. They will not be the retail rate. It'll be interesting to see what the cable company comes up with for its marginal cost to actually provide cable TV services. And those will be factored in. I think we have a little bit of room in our franchise fee at this point. I believe it's at four percent. Is that correct for the town?
Five.
It's at five, okay. So it is important to figure out which services we want to retain and which ones we don't need anymore. So we've been working with the town and the IT director in terms of deciding which facilities are currently using the services, what are paid for, what are considered free at this point, so that we can thin that list down if there are any that we don't need anymore. We do need at least one for the folks who work at the studio here to be able to monitor what's going out on the Exeter TV channels to be able to see the quality. The schools, I think, are probably using them less than they have in the past, and they're tracking down exactly what they're doing with cable TV services. So we'll tighten up that list to try to keep us from reducing the franchise fees. Comcast won't put that into place without notifying the town ahead of time and letting us know what they're going to be charging. And they haven't given us much indication on that yet. So what we're proposing is, instead of doing a full rewrite of the entire franchise agreement, which took a long time last time, is to do an amendment to sort of deal with those targeted issues, the in-kind services, counting towards the franchise free cap, and then changing the, the list of facilities that are receiving those. The thing that has changed quite a bit in the last ten years is the economics of cable TV. Fewer people are sticking with cable TV to get their video services and are pulling things off streaming services on the internet. As time goes on, it's likely that more and more people will move away from cable TV, and the cable TV companies, which also provide internet service, may eventually want to shed their franchises and no longer be obligated to provide cable TV services and just do internet service in town. Because of that shift, we're recommending now that many of our clients go to more lengthy franchise agreements. So we'd recommend ten years for this one because that will obligate Comcast to be in Exeter providing cable TV services as they are currently being provided, which many viewers like and don't want to have to go out and find their services on the web. So we, it's kind of moved from us thinking maybe shorter terms were better. Now we think that maybe a ten-year term would be better. I don't know at what point the cable TV business is really going to fade away entirely. It may not be for fifteen years, it may be longer than that. But I think ten years is a good sort of safe amount of time. The item that has come up recently is that I've been working with Atlantic Broadband, which is another cable company in New Hampshire, who was based originally in Rochester and the Lakes region. And they've started to move into some communities that Comcast operates in to provide competitive cable TV services to subscribers there. They have franchises now in Somersworth, in Dover, in Durham, Madbury, and they're looking into, moving into some areas in the seacoast. And they haven't finalized their plans for the twenty-two and twenty-three, but they'd be very interested in considering Exeter. If the town was agreeable to a competitive TV, cable TV franchise, that would give subscribers in Exeter a choice for their broadband and cable TV services in addition to Comcast and Consolidated also provides internet services here. So it would give some, some choice in terms of programming, prices, and service. The Atlantic system would be a completely new fiber system all the way to the premises, so it's, it's very fast for internet service and for video. The process has sort of, we've worked out quite a few of the kinks in the other towns where we've done franchise renewals, so we have a pretty good base document that we work with. I expect that Atlantic may be coming to the town sometime next spring and proposing a franchise agreement for the town of Exeter. The law in New Hampshire requires that we essentially have comparable franchise agreements for the existing cable operator and the newcomer. So we're not allowed to sort of undercut Comcast and give a sweetheart deal to, to Atlantic. So if we have a five percent franchise fee with Comcast, there'd need to be a five percent franchise fee from Atlantic. It's different subscribers. It's not like the town gets to have twice as many franchise fees because people are probably going to subscribe to one service and not the other. But it would spread it out over the two companies. So it's those types of business terms that have to be essentially comparable, the length of the franchise, those types of things. So I can certainly let you know if I hear more from Atlantic, and they will probably be in touch with the town manager once they're interested in, in going a little further, and they're happy to do a presentation to sort of explain that and that process to the board. So it's kind of a happy moment to finally have some alternatives for folks for their cable TV services. Any, any questions at this point?
That is great news. But any questions for Attorney Miller discussion? Selectwoman Brown?
Yeah, so a ten-year suggestion, that's only if the business still exists, so if they.
No, actually, that keeps them on the hook. So they can't, they can't stop providing services. And that's why our last franchise was seven years, although we've added another, like, five or four to, because we've been in negotiations so long. So it's been more like an eleven-year franchise. The thinking now is that if we did a shorter addition to the franchise, say five years, if Comcast in five years decided we're done with cable TV, we just as soon not have that regulation and those franchise fees, they could walk away from the town of Exeter. They would still probably want to provide internet services and voice over internet, but they would not be paying franchise fees on it.
My question was more literally, say that streaming trend increases such that Comcast goes out of business, the ten-year, they're not bound beyond their own scope of existence to honor the agreement, right?
So if they went belly up, yeah, bankrupt, then probably some other cable company would come in and buy the franchise. So it'd be, I mean, anything's possible in the world, but when cable companies have failed in the past, the other cable companies have come in, worked with the FCC, and bought up the franchises, basically. So I think it'd be very unlikely that there would be no cable service during that ten-year period.
Okay. And we're not bound to anything, our part of the agreement doesn't bind us to anything that would make that less advantageous than it currently is?
No, we, we're basically keeping the same terms, which we hammered out with great sweat and toil the last time around. And I, one thing that's very good is that the channels that the town has been operating have been very effective. So the education channel, the public channel, and the town channel have been really operating very well, particularly the education channel, which covers six towns. And I, and, you know, rumor has it that people in other towns like to watch the Exeter select board meetings too. So, you know, they're interesting.
Thank you.
Sure.
Selectwoman Gilman, any questions?
No, I have, I have no questions. I, I understand the, there are still details to be cleaned up, but they are not of such a large extent to, you know, not sign this to go along.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
No.
Okay.
Actually, I got our last question.
And Selectwoman Cowan?
No, but it's really exciting to hear about Atlantic.
Yes.
Really exciting.
Good, good.
That is good news. And, and I agree with you, Attorney Miller. I think a ten-year deal, a longer-term deal, keeping them accountable to us is advantageous. So, Mr. Dean, are you looking for any action this evening?
If it's, if the board's inclined to support the ten-year agreement, I think a, a motion to that extent would be great. It would give good direction to ourselves in this negotiation, and we could work toward that and then bring you back something to sign.
Okay.
Sure.
Is the board comfortable with a motion this evening?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to support an amendment and to carry the current ten-year cable TV franchise agreement extension with Comcast?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Kate.
Very good. Once we've got a final deal, what we'll do is bring it back to the board, and then there needs to be a public hearing so that the public can, can voice their questions.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving along, Mr. Dean, have a discussion on the tax rate and fund balance discussion?
Sure. It's about that time again, where we set our tax rate. And so we put together some information for the board in the, in the packet this week to talk about what amount of our unassigned fund balance we would recommend be applied to lower the town share of the tax rate. And the number that we came up with was eight hundred thousand dollars. Right now, our unassigned fund balance is approximately six point one million. We did appropriate three hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars from the fund balance at the last town meeting in twenty, March of 2021. So that brings our available amount down to five point seven four two million. And so we're recommending that the board, again, use eight hundred thousand of that, and that will leave us with about eight percent of what we use as a metric for our, our remaining fund balance against the appropriations that we compare it to, which is the town appropriations, the, and the schools, the statewide education tax in the county. So that all factors into the recommendation of how much fund balance we should have. The board's policy is to keep the fund balance between, anywhere between five and seventeen percent. And like I said, if this recommendation is adopted, it would be about eight percent, which is a, we, we feel like it's a good, solid figure. The application of eight hundred thousand dollars, what does it do? We think it will result in a tax rate of approximately five dollars and seventy-seven cents per thousand for the next billing cycle, and that's a decrease of fourteen cents per thousand over the, under the October 2020 rate, and would result in a decrease of forty-three dollars for a three hundred thousand dollar home. And I, I do say, keep in mind that the town share, the overall rate is approximately twenty-four percent. So taxpayers may see an increase in their bills when the school tax rate, the state education tax, and the county tax is figured into the bill. Just to, to highlight a couple of things that have impacted this tax rate setting. One is the, we've received or will receive, we anticipate, some additional meals and rooms tax revenue from the last legislative session. And the backup for that is actually in the packet. We anticipate about a four hundred thousand dollar gain in that category, which is pretty significant. That's not something that we had expected. We also did get those surpluses from, one from Health Trust that just came in. It's two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, give or take. And then there's a surplus dividend from Primex that came in earlier in the year. So that should help our bottom line balance and allow the use of the eight hundred thousand that we're recommending.
Thank you. I have one, one quick question, Mr. Dean. How would this, how would, how would the fund balance be affected? You, you proposed at the budget recommendations committee about possibly allocating additional funds for some of the CIP warrant articles perhaps. So is that factored into this?
Right. So what would happen is if that's approved as a method of, of funding, you could look at the balance as of twelve thirty-one twenty-one, which is actually an early number because what we'll do is we'll end up be, getting our audit in 2021 that will create a new fund balance with what is ever, whatever is left at the end of this fiscal year. But the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven seventy that we proposed would come out of that four point nine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any questions, discussion for Mr. Dean, the board, Selectwoman Brown?
Just one quick question on the tax rate draft. What's a war service credits line item?
So that is a, for a qualifying veteran, they receive five hundred dollars in a tax credit off of their property tax bill. And that portion of the financial schematic, if you will, is part of the town's tax rate. So we have to actually account for that in that five seventy-seven number.
Got it. So it's veterans, but not wartime only?
Um, it's, I, I'll, I can get back to you on that. I believe it's, I believe it's wartime only, but we can double-check that. It's a, there's a, I know there's a wider swath veterans credit that's available. I don't think we've adopted it yet as a town.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Selectwoman Brown. Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I have, I have no questions. We, we typically have done this around eight percent in the last few years. And it's an advantage to, and the reason that we're not just zeroing out our fund balance is because we do need operating funds for at least the first couple of months of the year. And we also have bonds that we're currently paying. So being able to give back something that we know we can afford to is always a good thing. And, and, but we do have to limit it at, to a certain point.
Right. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, any?
No question.
Selectwoman Cowan?
No.
I'll add too, that managing this appropriately helps with our bond rating, which is something that we're always paying attention to and want to make sure that that remains strong.
Mm-hmm. And I know as we discuss, Mr. Dean, when Riverwoods was here, you, you need to establish a tax rate soon. So is, is the board comfortable making a motion at this time? If so, I would entertain a motion to use eight hundred thousand, I just lost my turn of thought, sorry. A motion to use eight hundred thousand from the fund balance to lower the town share of the 2021 tax rate?
So moved. Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Okay. At last, on our discussion items, in your packet, you'll see a, a memo to the board, Mr. Dean and Assistant Town Manager, HR Director Melissa Roy, from Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and me. You'll recall that back in our April goal-setting session, one of the goals that the board set was to take a, a whole look at our existing boards and committees, and some of the procedures and policies and such. And Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I volunteered to tackle that. We met, we met several times over the summer, and we met a couple of weeks ago just to kind of put together our research and our thoughts. And before you tonight are several recommendations that, that we are making to the board for consideration. And again, that's based over our strategy meetings as well as the research that we did. We highlighted in our first, when Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I first met, we highlighted what we thought maybe four or five items should be addressed in this. The first of which was, was whether or not there should be term limits. Another was a new member appointee orientation for those new members. Also, boards and committees setting annual goals and objectives. Continuing the meeting frequency, the attendance, which is a town policy, I'm sorry, the, the attendance and then the, the frequency of meetings. There are some committees that meet monthly, some meet every other month, some are meeting several times a month. So we had a, a discussion on that, and we looked at all of the various boards and committees. So the first bullet item that you'll see is the term limits. And currently, all members of boards and committees in Exeter are appointed by the select board, except where in contradiction with the New Hampshire laws, the Planning Board Heritage Commission, Conservation Commission, where the New Hampshire RSAs provide for the method appointment composition. Most appointments are made for finite terms. The exceptions include the Energy Committee and Human Services, Human Services Funding. Terms for each board and committee member are staggered, and the select board annually reviews all expiring terms prior to April thirtieth and votes to reappoint those members whose term are expiring. We reached out to multiple municipalities across the state that have similar size, population, budget in Exeter, and we found that particularly with the Planning Board and Zoning Board, there are no other towns that have term limits. By term limits, I mean numbering the number of terms one may serve. Obviously, our term limit is three-year, but they can come back to the select board for reappointment. And Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf, I would like you to jump in too, because I think one of our main concerns. of our main concerns was maintaining the institutional knowledge that we have for some of our long-term volunteers.
Right. So the part of the discussion was that it was twofold. One, maintaining the the knowledge base of members and committee members who've been there for a number of years. But the other piece is a very obvious one, which is some committees have a difficult time also recruiting new members. So it would be, you know, not to our advantage to automatically require people to step down if we don't have the population of folks who are interested in running for committees that absolutely need folks there. So that was something that we had to really discuss and think about. Like, would we be willing to have a committee sit completely empty if we just don't have the the volunteers for that? So, you know, we went back and forth, and I could understand the reason why people wanted specific term limits. But when it came down to it, I think it's for the best interest of maintaining and moving forward that we that we allow folks to re be reappointed when when applicable. Did you want to go on to the next point, or did you want to continue with this? Sorry, go ahead.
Let's see if they're bored. But I wanted to just I also wanted to add, and it's jumping to a next bullet, but but one of the things that we talked about when we were discussing term limits is the attendance policy.
Right.
You know, so when somebody's up after a three-year term, they come reappointment, I think that the board moving forward really needs to get input from the chair of of that committee as to what the attendance records are. I mean, currently, the the policy in Exeter is 60% of the meetings, which I think is I think is too low. I mean, that's that's almost doing the bare minimum. But nevertheless, that's that's the policy. So if somebody's coming up for reappointment, and they haven't met that that criteria, then I think that that should be an automatic rationale for the board not to reappoint that individual.
Which also happily loops into the other points, which is meeting frequency and also goals and objectives. Because obviously, if the goals and objectives aren't clear, and you're having far too many meetings that don't have clear objectives, then that might be part of the reason why attendance isn't, you know, as highly like people aren't attending as much as they should. So I think having all of those pieces of the puzzle presented will have a clearer picture of, do we have the right folks sitting in these positions? And, you know, will this perhaps solve some of the attendance issues if we're not having meetings that perhaps are not necessary, or, you know, groups not meeting as frequent if they can focus their attention on what needs to happen within said timeframe?
Can I just one question or comment? That's a question. On the term limits, the Planning Board for several years had an informal process of when a voting regular member had served, I think, two terms, maybe three, that they rotate off to an alternate position, and then an alternate move up. And I was wondering if that was something that you had considered for this. It lets the alternates, you know, who can participate anyway, but actually learn as they go, and then sit and have the the voting authority, excuse me. And it kind of gives the people who have been there for six or nine years a little bit more flexibility in how often they, you know, feel like they need to be there, you want them to be there anyway. But I have a little disagreement about that whole thing, but that's a different story about alternates participating.
Well, the answer to your question is, we didn't really get into that. I, you know, didn't I went through our policies and procedures, or the most updated ones, which we need to tackle next because they're not as updated as they should be. But nonetheless, they are the updated policies and procedures. And though I've heard of that practice being done in the past, I didn't, you know, I didn't see that in our current policies, which is why we didn't we didn't bring it up. But I mean, you know, obviously, my question, and I'll turn to you as the historian, for how long was that done, or what period of time? Or maybe, Mr. Dean, do you remember?
It was it was done for, I think it I think it has stopped being done maybe five years ago.
Okay.
But it was done since the 90s, anyway, as a, you know, just an informal thing. The same with naming who is chair, vice chair, and clerk was just sort of a segue up from one seat to another, which has its pluses and minuses. I don't, you know, think that's necessarily the way to go. But, you know, that was a longstanding practice. It was just with the Planning Board, as far as I knew.
Just the Planning Board.
I mean, my feeling is if if something is going to be stated, then it'd be formal.
Sure.
And not informal.
Well, I guess my question was more like, if if you're interested in doing that, or the board in general feels comfortable doing that for our?
Then that's, I mean, this is, again, this is a draft for our discussion. So this isn't, you know, that's why we're doing this.
I mean, I wonder if that would, you know, because this has come up because of the Planning Board. And I wonder if that would be a way to both, you know, sort of support longevity in people who show up, and also, you know, highlight different perspectives and viewpoints. I mean, I will say, though, we have, you know, one alternate member who almost never shows up, and we have one alternate member who often is acting because the rest of the board doesn't show up. So like, you know, it's very. But I mean, that might be something sort of to consider. And I wonder also about about going to some of the boards and saying, hey, you know, what do you think about this? Would this be helpful? Would it cause problems? I don't know. Because I mean, I also think, you know, taking the Planning Board as the example, like, at a certain point, if we don't train new people, we're not going to, you know, like that. And that's also a real problem.
That's a good point as well.
And the Planning Board is a good, we can pick on them. Well, because they meet twice a month.
Right.
You know, which is a heavier load than the rest.
It is a heavy load. And we have positions that are open.
Alternate positions.
I will say, though, appointing is, I think, a much better form format than electing all the board commissions. Yeah, I think it's easier to find somebody mid-year or, you know, whenever. And I know one town that has every board is is elected, and they have trouble every year finding somebody who wants to go through the process of running.
So I think, you know, as it stands, maybe for the for the Planning Board, and perhaps even the ZBA, who also have, I believe they have alternate openings. I mean, that's something the board could consider. And I think maybe a next step would be reaching out to the respective boards and getting input there. But I think I think you all bring up a good point, that if you do it on a training basis, or if you have somebody serving maybe, what did you say, two consecutive terms or three consecutive terms, whatever it is, and then they step off to be an alternate for a term to have somebody else. But I think I think the board has to really insist on, you know, moving forward. If that's the case, that to Selectwoman Cowan's point, you know, if you're if you're bringing in an alternate to serve as a voting member, and you're doing that switch, that alternate has to have a longstanding history of proven attendance. And that's up to the, I mean, that's up to the chair of the board to communicate with the with the select board.
Yeah.
What the attendance records are.
Well, and the other thing that's not clear on some boards is the partition participation by alternates by seniority, whether who's been an alternate for the longest period of time gets to take the first, you know, fill the the non-voting role. Some boards just say, who wants to do it? And some boards say, oh, you've been here six years. It's you're voting. So that's a consideration. I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah.
One other thing that comes up, Mr. Chairman, is the idea of the alternate and whether they're participating as a full voting member at one of the meetings. So if you were in an alternate position, and let's just say for four meetings in a row, you weren't participating as a voting member, maybe that factors into the mix as well as in terms of attendance. So is the expectation of the boards, like the zoning board and the planning board, is that expectation still that the person attends, you know, 100% of the time, or at least 60% of the time, if they're always going to be sort of a non basically a non-voting member? And that speaks to, I think, sort of how the boards operate. And
Yeah.
Talking to those chair people, I think, will give some good insight to that particular side of the process.
Well, you know, I can speak for the one year that, you know, I was the select board rep to the planning board. And even when you had a full, when you had the full voting planning board there, and you had the alternates, the chair always let the alternates ask quite, I mean, they were they were a part of the meeting. They were asking questions. They were involved in the discussion. They just they weren't involved when it came time for deliberation in voting. So there it wasn't like they were just sitting there for four hours and listening. There was active participation. So.
Right. And there's not enough seats when all the alternates show up. I know that. Conservation Commission's like that, too.
Not lately, because we've had the people resign. But yeah. I just want to say, I think it's great that alternates want to come and participate and, you know, get the experience. I do question, though, in some jurisdictions, and I'm going to use, say, the ZBA because it's quasi judicial, that an alternate sitting at the table in the discussion but not voting has the opportunity to sway the other board members.
And again, I don't know that they do that.
And no responsibility for the decision in the end. So that that might be a different call by itself for, you know, because of its authority. The other ones, I think, are fine.
And I was only speaking to the, you know, I don't I don't know that the ZBA does that. So, okay, that's a good recommendation. Any other comments or discussion on the term limits? Okay. So we talked about when we when we both got elected, you know, just jumping, jumping into the into the fire. And of course, you know, this is a little bit different here. But we felt that for newly appointed members of a board or committee, there should be an orientation conducted. And, you know, it doesn't have to be an all-day extensive thing, but just maybe perhaps meeting with somebody, Mr. Dean, that you delegate. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I thought this would be a perfect opportunity for the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director, that she might be a good person to conduct the orientation, introduce them to appropriate staff and department heads for that committee, and then maybe also having the chair of the committee come in and just doing an orientation. We had suggested that that be done within the first 30 days. And I would suggest also that that would apply to newly elected select board members as well.
Yeah, and that's a good idea. And the only the only thing I'm thinking of offhand is just that when somebody is appointed to a land use board, there's a process within the planning and building departments. But we've got a good bridge builder in our Assistant Town Manager, and I think she can sort of build that bridge and make that kind of a system work, if that's something you're interested in.
Did you have any?
No, I just think this is a perfect segue from what we were just talking about. You know, all the questions that were just posed now are the types of questions that new appointees, I imagine, would have. And rather than six months in, finding out what they should be doing, or, you know.
Yeah.
I bet if you surveyed, a lot of people who are new members to boards may not even have the answers to what their attendance should be.
Right.
Whether or not alternate should be shouldn't be speaking during certain parts of discussions. So I think it's it's important for us to have this so that we can streamline across all different committees and, you know, know what we're doing and be able to have better conversations about things.
And we, you know, we both we both, you know, kept bringing up 91A. I mean, that's that's the number one thing that, you know, most folks, you know, aren't aware of what they what they should or shouldn't be doing. I mean, I remember Primex, I believe it was Primex, oh, no, it was the NHMA, came into town, I think, the second year I chaired the BRC. And there were a lot of chairs of different boards and committees who met at the library. And these are all people who had been chairing for years. And it was pretty eye-opening, some of the things that were being presented. So I think, you know, just doing an overview of 91A, you know, going over town policies and procedures in addition, you know, to meeting the respective staff. And I would also say that it, you know, if you have a newly appointed chair that had never chaired before, maybe somehow providing them, you know, the rules of conduct, you know, how to chair.
Good suggestions.
There are, I have a couple of comments. One is that the more formal boards that are regulated through RSAs are required to have a rules of procedure, which would, it's not, it's informal Roberts Rules of Order, just tells you, you know, someone makes a presentation, someone can offer rebuttal. And in the HDC, you get to do a surrebuttal, which I haven't seen. I think people, different boards do it casually. But so there is that. And sometimes those aren't presented in that in onboarding package that we've been talking about. I think, take a look at the Conservation Commission, because they actually do have a new member orientation packet
Okay.
on their webpage. Those committees without support do not have such a thing.
Right.
Although informally, I'll say in the Heritage Commission, we do have a package of physical materials that we give, which includes a copy of the full 91A thing and some Roberts Rules of Order matters. So each board has done it or not done it, and it would be nice to make it formal.
Agreed. And I think if there's there's more buy-in, if it's more formal, and it's done within that first 30 days, and then it gives town management the comfort to be able to come back to the board to say that, you know, the new appointee has come in and gone through the onboarding.
We didn't, when we had the NHMA come in, that was a special request to them. And we we asked all chairs of different boards to come, and there was not great participation in that.
The one I went to at the library was pretty, that was 2017, I think.
Must be thinking one before that. That's good.
And there were even some select board members there, too. We really felt strongly about goals and objectives, and Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf felt like she'd jump in on.
Yeah. So I just think that for, obviously, some committees, some boards, it's very clear what the objectives are. You know, there's a very concise, here's your directive, here's what you need to do, and, you know, the tasks come to you. But for other committees, I think that it can get a little vague over a period of time. And it would be helpful, I think, for chairs of those committees to be able to have a planning session, have goals that then they can, you know, over the course of the year, see, are we achieving our goal? Are we reaching our goal? Are we staying on task? Are our meetings aligned with what the goals and objectives are for that year? And that, in part, will help figure out, are we having enough meetings? Are we having too many meetings? Like, what do we want to focus on? Perhaps, does our committee need to take a break for indefinite amount of time because our purpose no longer exists? And we meet to just say we met, and then we go home. And obviously, no one wants to be part of a committee that doesn't have an actual purpose in the moment. But it's okay to perhaps put a committee to, let's say, hibernation until it's necessary for it to come back, depending on what the needs of the town are. So I think it would also be helpful for us board members to have an idea of what different groups are working on, also when we volunteer to sit on the committees. Like, okay, what are you actively working on for the next two years or the next year? You know, what are the long-term goals? I think I'm aligned with that. I would love to sit on that committee. You know, so I think that's something that's important for us to do and to keep the work that we do and that they do purposeful.
And can I? I would, in however we word this, make the goals and objectives date to coincide with the budget cycle, because one of the goals and objectives can be met with grant funding.
Right.
Different things. And that will depend on if we fund board or not, matching funds or not.
Now, obviously, too, when we when we talked about this, there are certain boards and committees that this would not be applicable to, right? Like the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, Budget Recommendations Committee, Historic District Commission. I mean, they're, those three, they're actually hearing, you know, they're hearing cases. The BRC has a specific function. But really, for all the other committees, I think that's an excellent point to time it around budget. But we've heard from committees just this year, you know, coming to the select board, asking if the select board's, you know, is still supportive of their endeavors. And I think that this kind of puts the ball in both. And I think that this kind of puts the ball in, in both, both sides of the court, right? We, we give a mission, or we work with a committee on their mission and their, and, you know, what their, what their objective is. And I think that if they annually put together their goals and objectives while they meet and bring it back to the select board via the select board rep, then it gives, it gives us an opportunity to see what their goals are. It gives us the opportunity to maybe tell them how we feel about those goals, or whether there should be others or whatnot. But I think that way, where everyone's accounted accountable, both the select board and the committees.
Right. And also whether the goals are truly viable.
Right.
You know, if you're setting goals, let's see, that are unachievable in, you know, the realm of what we can actually do, then it's better to find that out at the start than, you know, two-thirds of the way through the process where finally someone says, that's, we're not capable of even considering that.
And part of it's financial, too. I mean, you know, we've had a lot of great ideas brought before us, but it's just not, you know, feasible to pay for it all at one time.
Another element of the committee structure is looking at the master plan as well and looking at the one that was just adopted in 2018, because there, there are quite a few elements of that master plan and recommendations that involve town committees. So, you know, my suggestion is that they, we, we use that as a bellwether, and, and our committees can, too, and look at that and say, are we in line with what the master plan recommendations were in 2018? It's a, it's still a fairly recent document, so just something that, to, to keep in mind.
Yep, yep, that's a good, good note.
And that also, I think, goes along with then historical information, where, you know, outside of just looking at past agendas, you can actually see, oh, three years ago this was proposed as the major project. Here's what happened at the end of the year, at the, you know, report of, did we reach our goal? Were our objectives met? And you can see that perhaps this is not something that we should be focused on, because we can see that this was, this was brought up before, and here are the reasons why it's, it's not capable of happening here right now.
Right, right. Anybody else on goals and objectives?
Well, I, I like that there is also an additional opportunity to collaborate between the boards.
Yes.
Because I think that that's something that we do not do well.
Agreed.
Because everybody's sort of in their own little silos and not talking to each other. So do we think that we should ask? I mean, I'm asking because I have a planning board meeting soon, I think. Should I talk to them about, like, a rotating leadership?
I think that would be valuable. I mean, you know, this, again, was just, this, this was our draft of what we've done so far and our recommendations. It's obviously a discussion amongst the board. It's not anything we're deciding this evening.
Yeah.
But I think for Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf and I to revise this and go to step, step two, yeah, if we can go to some of our boards and committees and ask their input, and then you can, you, we can all bring it back to the board, and we can take notes and, and try to make this perfect. You know, the, the goal is to, to improve, you know, and I think that, you know, we talked about, or Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf talked about, you know, maybe hibernating committees. I mean, the select board, you know, continues. I mean, they, we review the list of committees annually, and we can just continue them at any time. I mean, obviously, not the, the lineage, which we've done it a few times. And, and it may come to a point after a year of looking at the goals and objectives, maybe consolidate.
Yeah.
There could be some committees that, there's overlap, or maybe you take, instead of, you know, cutting people off, just joining everyone. That's, that's a possibility, too.
Yeah, I'll tell you one thing to consider, just because it has been a struggle forever. Although the town voted to have both an Historic District Commission and a Heritage Commission, that we've, I think, I haven't talked to them, so I'm not going to say we should consider combining them, but there is an opportunity. It would require a town vote to, to disband, but the, you know, there is a difference between what they do, and I don't know that I want to add one responsibility onto the other, but, you know, given how hard it is to, for anyone, although given also that we're talking about training materials and more, greater support from staff if necessary, that could, you know, lessen the problem.
You know, the other thing, too, with the meeting frequency, I mean, obviously, you know, the select board meets several times a month, the planning board meets twice a month, so that's, that's not applicable here. But, you know, Selectwoman Brown and I have talked throughout the last year of meeting frequency and whether or not some committees are meeting for the sake of meeting, whether, you know, you need to meet monthly. I mean, I think there are some smaller committees that are meeting several times a month. And maybe that's something we can look at, as to whether or not that's useful time, or are they meeting too often and not able to accomplish any goals because they're, they're meeting? I mean, if you, if you meet once a month and you set out what you want to follow through for the next meeting, I mean, maybe, maybe, you know, it takes that full 30 days. You can also create subcommittees, too. I mean, if you find a project or something. So, you know, you and I talked about a couple committees that we felt were meeting too frequent. You know, and I think that's something, we can all look at the committees that were select board reps, too, and make that observation and note and bring it back and, and talk to those committees about, you know, whether they're meeting too frequently or, or infrequent enough. I know, we've talked, you and I have talked a lot, I don't know if you want to add anything there.
No, I think it's a perfect point, and I don't think we want to limit the goals and objectives to a budget cycle. I think the master plan's a great idea from Russ as well, but depending on the committee's scope, some committees may be designed to draw funds in or do a grant draft or something. So, but having something outside the committee to justify its, its timeline makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would actually get some input from the two most grant-seeking departments, Planning and DPW, and for their experience on timing. I, because I have experience only with a certain level of, of grants, and I know that timing of the March vote on the budget greatly decreased the amount of time that we could do the project. And so that's why, that was why I threw out the recommendation, but maybe it's not necessary.
Okay. And I think, you know, it's not going to be a one-size-fits-all, because, you know, there, these are different sizes, they have different functions, but, you know, if we can set out some, some guidelines. But I think in, you know, the last bullet point, again, the attendance, I think that's something that the, the chairs of the various committees and boards really need to start taking that more seriously.
Yeah.
And if there are volunteers who, for whatever reason, you know, are not able to make the attendance minimum, then I think that as a board, we need to look at, you know, making sure that the committees are fully attended, fully functional. Any other thoughts or comments?
Yeah, one, one observation, it was just on the frequency of meetings and that some boards or committees may be meeting just to meet. We do have in our policy that the meeting minutes are considered automatically approved after three meetings.
So if they don't approve on the meet, on the minutes?
If the, if you don't approve the minutes in the first, second, or third meeting, then they're considered approved.
Okay.
So if, if a committee doesn't have any work to do, and all there is to do is approve the minutes, they can put it off. And if they're amenable to it, you know, just don't meet for, until you need to, and the minutes that you've missed have been passed.
Okay. Thank you for adding that. Okay, well, this was a valuable discussion. Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf will take these suggestions and comments back, and we'll integrate them into this, and maybe we can start talking to some different chairs on boards and committees and get some input there. We've got the budget session starting really for us in December. We'll get to the meeting schedule in a little bit, but maybe, maybe try to take another attempt at this before the end of the year. Is that fair? Okay, great, great, thank you. Okay, moving into regular business, there are no abatements, credits, or exemptions this evening. We already heard our approval from Assistant Fire Chief Pizon. Mr. Dean, your town manager's report, please.
Okay, so a few things. One is that trick-or-treat this year is on Sunday, October 31st, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. Hasn't been a lot of talk about it yet, but that, that is the date. And then Parks and Rec is hosting their Halloween parade and costume contest on Saturday, October 30th, at 10:00 a.m. So that should be a, a great event, too. The, I attended the fire swearing-in ceremony for Chief Wilking, Deputy Chief Matheson, Deputy Chief Fritz, and Shift Lieutenant Patrick Robichaud, and Mike Avellino last Friday, and it was a very nice, nicely-run ceremony. And good to see everybody be put in place after waiting so long with the COVID-19 issues and so forth, so that was very good. I wanted to recognize Sergeant Brian Hannah, who submitted and successfully received a $4,000 Homeland Security Grant for warm zone equipment in the police department. So congratulations to Sergeant Hannah.
Congratulations.
Great, great work, well done. The Salem Street Utility Project is underway. You probably, you may have seen the construction trailer, it's on Park Street Common, sort of off to the side. And then with our signage out there in, in the neighborhood, the project's underway. They'll do the sewer on Oak Street first, and then they'll move west on Forest Street to Walnut Street over the next few weeks. And there is, there are some delays on Locust Street, and that is due to delays in pipe deliveries, so just looking for people to be patient with some of the supply chain issues that we're experiencing these days. And then the police department's continuing their work on speed surveys. They've completed the ones on Elliott and Pine Streets, and I did talk to the chief today about updating the ordinance on speed limits, and he informed me he'd like to do that on or about November 22nd, to give them a little bit more time, just to kind of round out exactly what they need to do and be, be set for, for that timeframe. And then the other thing I wanted to mention to the board is the all-day BRC meeting is this Friday at, starting at 8:30 in the morning, and that there is a project also in, off of Stony Brook Lane in Stratum that you may have read about, and there's a possibility that those applicants may come to the select board to seek water or sewer services, so I wanted to give the board a heads-up in advance on that. We're meeting with the proponents of the project this Wednesday to talk to them about that, so, but that would come through you, and something to think about. And unless there are questions, that was my report for tonight.
Any questions for Mr. Dean? Just one, two comments. Mr. Dean, I also attended the swearing-in at the fire department with you, and it was well overdue. Congratulations to all that were, that were sworn in for their new respective positions. It was nice to see some retirees come back and visit the firehouse and, and celebrate with them. And just seeing every, all of the department there and members of the police department, it just reminds us what a valuable resource we have in our men and women in the fire department, even, you know, during regular times. Their, their job is tough, but certainly over the last year and a half, and I just wanted to acknowledge both the police and fire department again. And we're fortunate to have the two departments that we have. Last thing, Mr. Dean, we'll get into the board calendar in a little bit, but we, we had talked a couple of times about Swayze Parkway next steps. I know we, we talked about that quite a bit over the summer, and we, we've had public come and comment, we've had certainly emails, both pro and con, and I know that we've alluded to the public that we're going to discuss this publicly. I would like to have that on the agenda for one of the November meetings to start, and that would include inviting the trustees and also members of the public to weigh in. I think that there's plenty of interest either way to look into a warrant article. And I'd like the public to know that the select board want to take this up as a potential warrant article before somebody may submit a citizen's petition. I think that the board, it would be, it would be prudent if the board could try to come up with a warrant article in consultation with Attorney Mitchell and the trustees, so if we can get that on maybe the second meeting in November.
Yeah, and talking about that, too, the, we're reminded that the citizen petition deadline for a warrant article is actually the second Tuesday in January, so it's off a bit from today. You know, it's not an immediate thing that needs to be, if, if a citizen's petition were to come forward. The other thing is, the sooner we can decide a course of action, the sooner you're probably going to avoid the notion of having two competing articles in the same warrant, so if the board wanted to put one on, but then one can't be a citizen's petition, it gets messy. And citizen's petitions typically cannot be withdrawn after they're submitted, so that is something that else that is in the mix of this, these topics, so.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that there was an appetite, just judging by board discussions in the summer, that the board would like to at least have further public discussions with respect to this topic. Okay. Okay, select board committee reports. Start with you, Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf.
So didn't have any meetings last week. We have, I have some coming up this week. Unfortunately, the Arts and Culture Committee did not get the agenda in on time, so we couldn't meet last Tuesday, so it's going to get pushed to, two weeks from now.
Okay, great.
And that is it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cohen?
We had a planning board meeting last week where we considered a couple of subdivision lot adjustments. One is on New Fields Road, it's 50 New Fields Road, and it's turning that church into four residential condo, condo units, and there wasn't any opposition. It was interesting. And then there is actually another church that is subdividing in selling off part of their property. And that is 12 Little River Road into two lots. And then we had the extension of approval for the Rose Farm project. I understand that the Supreme Court finally weighed in and backed the decision of the planning board, I think, back from 2017, was it?
I'd have to look.
It's been, it's been hanging out there for a while, so that happened, too.
Seventeen or eighteen.
Seventeen or eighteen. I, I think it was, it started the year before I ran for office, I think.
So it's coming back to the planning board for another?
We already did it. It was, they needed an approval because they had been caught up in court for so long, so they asked for another approval for a year.
Ah, that's made an extension.
Okay. Thank you. Selectwoman Gilman?
To continue along that line, I had a Conservation Commission meeting, and the same project came up for conditional use permit, because some of the building is going to go into wetlands. And there was, it just went kind of in this big circle of whether there, we have the jurisdiction to comment on the approval that the planning board gave, because no one ever told the Conservation Commission why the planning board didn't use the Conservation Commission's recommendations, and would that have made a difference in our consideration of this CUP, and does it really matter? So we ended up tabling the, the project. To get it straight, just, you know, we really had a, I think we really had a short prospect on this project, and we were trying, we were, it was getting taken wider out, or taken out wider. So that will continue until next month. The Heritage Commission is considering more demolitions. Everybody's tearing down their buildings. There are two that PEA has, that wants to demolish 31, 31 High Street, which is the one that's right at the end of Portsmouth Ave and High Street, and then the one behind it, 8 Gilman Lane. I believe we're having a public hearing on it, but I'll keep you posted on it. It's not next week, or not this coming week. And then a HTC meeting on Thursday.
Agreed. Thank you very much. Selectwoman Brown?
So your report with Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf couldn't have come at a better time. I am the bottleneck for both of my committees, I think. So the Communications Advisor is looking for sort of a refreshed direction in light of all the changes there, so I told them I'd get back to them after tonight. So we're trying to figure out better times to meet. Facilities Advisor? Facilities Advisor as well, last meeting, they didn't have a quorum, so they weren't able to hold a meeting, but they'll be meeting this week, 4:00 on Thursday, I believe it is, and going over all the different, you know, projects to give updates on, as well, they're trying to figure out a better time to meet.
Okay, great, thank you.
That reminds me of one thing, if I might.
Please.
Sure. One of the committees that I sit on had an instance where there were three members present and one participating electronically, so that was a quorum, and they all could vote, and it's permissible by State RSA right now that at least, or only one member can participate electronically, as long as we do roll call votes. And that committee, I wasn't able to be at the meeting, to tell them that it was okay. So, they adjourned the meeting because they didn't think they had a quorum.
Oh, okay.
So it's one of those training things that people need to know about, and again, that whole aspect of whether we're going to have virtual meetings or not is coming up, well, we'll probably have a bill this year.
Good. Well, we appreciate the update. I did not have any meetings, although the BRC met last Wednesday, they had a special introduction to the CIP, they didn't go over any of the projects. I could not attend at the last minute, but I did watch the entire meeting on TV, and it was very, if you can take, it was only about an hour, so if you can go watch it on the feed, there was a lot of really good discussion amongst the committee members on looking at the CIP projects, the budget as a whole, the revenues and all of that. It was interesting. I think this is going to be a good budget season. Good committee, good discussion. Piece of correspondence in our packet is from Andrew Elliott, who was here at our last meeting to give public comment on the speed study. Mr. Dean commented on that earlier, that Chief Poole is working on that and will be presenting to the board by November 22nd. There's no other correspondence. Reviewing the board calendar, I'm going to ask the board to consider, when I looked at the calendar again, it looked like we skipped a week.
Yeah.
When we were looking at dates, Mr. Dean, so not wanting to go three weeks again before a meeting, and also recognizing that we may only want to have our regular two meetings in December, I propose a meeting on November 1st, which would be two weeks from today, as opposed to November 8th, and then November 15th, which would be two weeks, and then also November 22nd. So we'd have consecutive weeks on the 15th and 22nd. The rationale behind that is that the next Monday would be the 29th, and that is a short week for the town the week before, due to the Thanksgiving holiday, so I think it would just be more productive for Mr. Dean and I to put together a packet on a full week. And then that would also line us up for two meetings in December, rather than having three meetings in December.
Can you say it again?
So the dates would be November 1st, November 15th, November 22nd.
Got it.
December 6th.
Hold on.
Oh.
Okay.
And then December 20th. Are there any objections from the board on those dates?
Nope.
Mr. Dean, I'd like, I know.
It's the 20th.
So, yeah, it's November 1st.
No.
The 1st, the 15th, the 22nd.
The 22nd, so there'd be two, or two and a half.
But then not Thanksgiving.
Yep, and then December 6th and 12/20. Presumably, the Chairman of the BRC, Bob Kelly, will be presenting the budget recommendations on the 6th of December. I think you said Chief Poole will be talking about the speed ordinance on the 22nd. Mr. Dean, I know you're going to try to speak with Attorney Mitchell, if we could try to get the Swayze Park on either the 1st or the 15th. And I will anticipate, between the trustees being invited and also public interest, I would anticipate that that meeting would probably be primarily for that discussion, I would think.
Yeah.
And that's how we will try to queue it up.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion from the board? Anything else? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand at turn. Thank you, good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.